Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have roll call, please. Member McDonald?
Here.
Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
And Chair McAlpine? Here. So, we do have a quorum present for this evening's meeting, so we can go ahead and proceed. First off is the approval of the agenda. There's a copy of the agenda at the table when you signed in, and we've also all received a copy in our packets in preparation for this meeting. We do need a motion to approve the agenda. We can do a all-call vote unless there's any changes or revisions that you all would request. Hearing none. If we could just have a all-call vote to approve the...
Do you have a motion to approve?
Yes. We need a...
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you. If we can all vote to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We don't have any old business, so we will move on to new business. First off is application number PBA 0723. Indra Tanawani?
Indra Hawani.
Tawani, representing three...
Minutes from last month.
Oh, I am so sorry. I'm sorry. I have a headache, so I'm going to bear with me all, please. In the packet also was our minutes from our meeting on July 10th, 2023. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to review them, and what we would need now, unless there's any requested additions or revisions, is a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All right, so we can do an all-call vote for that as well? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the minutes have been approved. We have no new business. I mean, old business. We will move on to new business. Indra Tan...
Hawani.
Tanawani, representing 3690 Phillips. It is parcel number 0425383-001, located on the east side of Phillips Avenue between North 12 Mile Road and Edwards. There's a request for a dimensional variance of two feet on the south side yard setback. The ordinance states that we need to have a minimum of five-foot yard setback, and the requested lot split would create a three-foot south side yard setback. If you can go ahead and just provide us some background on the requested... Yes, please.
3690 Phillips Avenue dates back to 1928. Parcel number 04250733001 has an original platted lot size of 80 by 110. The petitioner, Indra Tawani, is requesting to split the parcel originally plotted at 100, or 80 feet by 110 to a 40-foot by 110-foot lot. The lot split request meets the Schedule of Regulations in Section 138.526 on lot size requirement of 4,400 square feet in the R1D zoning district. Lot coverage of the existing structure would be approximately 35%. Corner lots are allowed 45% lot coverage. A lot split would create the existing structure at 3690 Phillips to be non-conforming on the south side yard setback. A lot split would create the south side yard setback to be three feet. In order for the lot split to be granted, a two-foot variance is necessary on the south side yard setback. The Schedule of Regulations in Section 138.526 of the zoning ordinance requires at least one side yard setback, minimum five foot. For a variance to be approved, the Zoning Board of Appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138.606 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property, and the requested variance should be granted. Motion for approval and denial were included in the provided report.
Thank you. Just for the record, I want to state that the five standards that we consider when determining whether we should grant this variance are: A) The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property; B) The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners; C) Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent property owners from using the property for a permitted use or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome; D) The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the other property owners; and the final one is the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. At this point, I'm going to open it up to my fellow commissioners and see if we have any questions from Ms. Anderson regarding the application that's in front of us this evening. No questions? So, at this point, I would like the petitioner to come forward. If you can please state your name and your address, and tell us a little bit about your request and why you think that you should receive an approval for the lot split, or for the side yard setback.
Well, thank you, Board, for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Indra Hawani, and I'm the current owner of 3690 Phillips Avenue in Berkeley. I'm a little bit overwhelmed with the number of board members here. And I do not know the proper language, so I would like to present it in a layman's term. I apologize for that. I purchased this property in April this year. It was sitting on the market, I think, if I'm not incorrect, the owner died, and the property was on the market for almost an year. But the original structure was not in a very good condition. Inside, outside was good. And then there was an extra lot that I found was sitting. So, I already had a vision. The reason I bought this property was because my son, he's in medicine in Grenada, and next year, he'll be doing his rotations in Ascension in Royal Oak. So, I found this to be a great opportunity. Next year, when he comes, he can live in this house and, you know, get rid of some debt. You know, there's a lot of medical debt that he has. So, as a family unit, I'm trying to, I tried to acquire it. I've already applied for permits for the original structure, and I found that it can be a great opportunity to split this lot. It's on a very important and very close to the downtown area on Edward and Phillips. It's a great area, lot of mix of old and new houses. So, if I split this lot, which I already have found a builder who I have a contract with me upon contingency of the approval, is willing to put up a new house, brand-new house over there. And there are a lot of these kind of houses that are coming up in that area. And I did get it topographically, engineering-wise, all the logistics were done through Green Tech. It's a licensed engineering company, and they told me there is definitely a two-foot of difference that I should, it's a variance, and I don't know how to say it better than that. And, but, when he create, if you see on the map, there is a structure. He said, "I will still be able to keep a 15-foot difference between two structures on either side, and the new house can be constructed based upon that." Also, I can request, and I can put as a contingency, that a three-foot underground could be available to me, oh, sorry, two-foot of underground can be available to me from the next lot, which is a split, in case if there is any utility issues and all that. So, overall landscape of 15-feet difference between two properties will still be there. So, that's the main thing. Yes, there is going to be a two-foot less between the midline of each lot. The other thing that I found out, if I, with this two-foot of variance, I have to put a fire wall resistance on the garage structure, which I've already applied the permit for. They have approved the material I was going to use. My contractor has agreed to make this change. So, we will make also that as a wall resistance. So, overall, if you look at the big picture, I'm trying to cover everything well. So, between two properties, 15-foot will be there. I could have the access of five-foot overall between the two, and a new house will be, brand-new house will be here with a new family living in, and my family living also on the side. That's my proposal. With this two-foot of strict variance code that you have, I think there's an opportunity lost here for me and for the city. And I know Berkeley can, Berkeley is a very progressive city. So, they will accept, they'll make this little exception of two-foot and grant me the approval.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the petitioner?
So, you currently live in the 3690 while this renovation is taking place?
I'm not living, because it's under repair. It was a very, it was very neglected property. I am putting almost close to $100,000 in the house to make it livable. There are a lot of permits that have been applied to the city for the current structure. It was a one-bedroom house. I'm making it a two, oh, sorry, it was a one-bathroom house. I'm making it a two-bath house. I'm really, a lot of uplifts have been done. It was, what do you call that? Radiant heat. I'm making it as a forced heat. So, I'm really bringing up to 2023, you know? All the inside structure, brand-new kitchen, everything will be brand-new.
When do you plan to move in?
My son will be moving in either in next, between March through May, depending upon when he clears his USMLE.
Okay.
Part one.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the petitioner? Okay. Thank you so much. If you can have a seat, we're going to talk amongst ourselves, and then we'll also get some comments from the public and read the comment that we received as well.
And thank you again. Thank you all.
Okay. So, what we'll do now is we'll open it up to the public to provide any kind of comments or feedbacks you have regarding the petition, if you would like to come forward and speak. If you haven't already signed in, we'll need you to sign in as well, but if you want to speak, we'll just need you to come up, state your name and address for the record, please. And if you want to talk, so you can talk first, and then you can sign, or you can, whatever. We'll read her letter. This is her letter. Okay. You can come forward then, Ms.
Hello. My name is Jan Salay. I've been a resident of 3675 Royal Avenue for over 30 years. I'm filing a formal protest to this lot split and proposed new build construction at 3690 Phillips Avenue, since the proposed lot split and the building construction plans are not in conformity with Berkeley's Schedule of Regulations without this variance request. Thus, it violates the Michigan Land Division Act, MCLA 560.109, and a variance request cannot be granted due, to cure these violations of the Michigan Land Division Act. In addition, today's proposed variance request violates the key elements for granting variance requests. Because, one, the need for this variance is the direct result of the actions of the current owner. And granting this variance will be injustice for the neighboring property's owners. The current community director clearly disregards these key elements in her recommendation and does not support the current resident's best interests in this case. I would suggest the members of the ZBA physically view the construction injustice at 3679 Royal Avenue and review its own files for that ZBA application 1021, which the 3679 variance request heard at the January 1st, 2022 variance hearing. In that case, the community director was against the proposed building construction plan at the split lot of 3679-3689 Royal Avenue. That variance request was tabled, then withdrawn as Hillen Homes obtained an approved construction plan and lot split with Berkeley's Building Department. Berkeley's Building Department has allowed 3679 Royal to be constructed with many code violations and variance violations, and it's been a construction nightmare. As a result, there are lawsuits filed with respect to that. I respectfully request that ZBA deny SB 0723 because it violates the Michigan Land Division Act and clearly fails the key elements for granting a variance request. I would also request, or I would also suggest that the ZBA investigate Berkeley's Building Department handling of new building constructions on lot splits in Berkeley. Thank you.
Ma'am, I just...
Can we ask a few questions?
You, as I was hearing it, I thought you were referring to 3790?
What? Today, I'm referring to today's request. But 3679 was a case that was before you last year.
Okay. So, so, as I was listening, what are your actual concerns regarding 3690 that do not relate to 3790, and what has transpired there?
Well, that's, today's request would be the direct violation. So, those are the two elements under your variance request. And then, and that's why I'm saying the injustice. I mean, you should see this lot. It is a nightmare, and it's been left like that, and it will be left like that while these lawsuits are pending, which is not fair to the residents.
We don't have anything to do with that, but...
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
It'd be frustrating, but we don't have...
Well, this is, the Building Department's responsible for these, so...
Right. And unfortunately, all we are obligated is to do is to review zoning requests.
And well, that's why I brought up the January.
But to determine this particular one. So, if there are lawsuits pending from a January request...
Well, that usually has the support of what the injustice would be to the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak? You can come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Rocky Huddleston, 3651 Royal Avenue, Berkeley. And I agree with Janice. I say no. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? You, it's, this is only for the public at this point. That's okay. We did, if there's no one else from the public, we'll close that portion, and before we do so, I will actually read some communication we received that was dated August 14th, 2023. It is addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. "With regard to the zoning variances at 3690 Phillips, we strongly oppose the variance requested. No home should be squeezed in less than 10 feet from their neighbor. Reading the mostly illegible application is not helpful. The renovation of the 100-year-old home at 3690 Phillips is being done in a very unprofessional manner. Unmarked vehicles show up at odd hours, mostly late afternoons and weekends. Today was the first day they arrived during regular hours. Then, they blocked the very busy sidewalk on Edwards with their trucks. Last month, a concrete crew, garage floor, were loudly cursing and using racial slurs easily heard from across the street. Changing the zoning laws for someone with so little respect for our neighborhood seems like a very bad idea. Design a smaller home that would fit on a smaller lot, or don't build at all. Keep Berkeley a desirable place to raise a family, not just a place for builders to cash in. Vote no on this variance." And it is signed Julia and Bruce Wilhoff, residents at 3713 Oakshire Avenue. Okay. So, any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, I guess I'll lead it off. The request for us is a two-foot variance. Am I understanding that's correct? That's the only variance request with which is on the table in front of us?
For this particular application.
Everything else that I've heard tonight is an objection that is completely unrelated to the variance issue before us today. We don't have control over the construction crews. We don't have control over the timing of which they arrive. We don't have control over the building process or how long that takes. There are mechanisms within our city to address those concerns, should those concerns rise to that level. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, I've been on this board now, as a permanent member, very briefly, but I've been an alternate member for almost a year, and I've seen these types of requests approved, if I'm not mistaken unanimously, by this board. I don't see anything in this request. I think we are, as a community, invested in people who are willing to fix their homes up and raise the value of the properties around them. I think that's something that we consistently encourage and want to encourage. As a resident, obviously, like all of you, I certainly would like to see that. And my concern with the objections to this are none of them get to the actual heart of the issue that's before us today. And my position is that the request itself is not, by any means, out of the ordinary, and something that we don't tend to approve.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with the part where all those other things don't matter. However, in this case, the, and I believe he's well-intentioned. He wants to fix up the house and then have another house there, but the, he, the applicant is creating this problem. So, to me, I don't think it's something that could be approved. They've, it's self-created. It's not like it's an existing variance, and they're not exceeding that variance. They're creating that by splitting the lot.
I agree that he is creating it, and that it's very narrow. It becomes even more narrow than it was as far as the variance, or the setback. And that concerns me with the way the houses are closer together and things like that. I'm concerned that it would, you know, it would affect drainage and space for the driveway, depending on where they put it and that kind of thing, and that concerns me, so...
Mr. Allen? I'm sorry, Mr. Krug, and then Mr. Allen, and then Mr. Krug.
Okay. Thank you. The, absolutely, I agree with everything my fellow board members are saying. But the second, the new house that's going to be built on there should not be built two feet narrower.
It's not, you're creating the variances for the existing, and once they put that lot split in, the variance is needed for the existing house, not the new house.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, the existing house would have to move, slide over two feet, which you can't.
This is...
Otherwise, yes.
Is sad to say, self-created. And I understand what he's trying to do, and I applaud him for trying to do it, but it is self-created, and we have to hit all five of the standards. I kind of agree with that, too, is the, for our second standard, that it's... It is self-created. Even though the new home, according to the survey here, would maintain the 15 feet from either structure on either side, it'd just be a narrower home, like a 21-foot-wide home.
This, is this a dimensional variance?
Yeah.
So, that's the four standards, right?
No, still five.
Actually, there's five.
But it's still always five.
Is there?
Okay.
So, I mean, so I understand this correctly. There is no way that anybody could build in this interim, this lot that's in between the two houses unless they were to... I'm just trying to visualize. How does, is there a way that the current structure, I mean, he's doing a, he said himself, $100,000 renovations, if they were to, you know?
You mean, you'd have to move the entire...
The whole house got to come to the south, which is a sidewalk right now.
That's a house, or the side of the house would have to move towards the street.
Right, which basically, as it's in our packet, without the variance, it would require a, or a complete demolition of the structure, the lots are not able to be split.
Right. It would have to move towards Edwards, the house.
Right.
And you have to keep that 10-foot setback on that north side of the original house, so that's...
And if the, if the original house is in as bad a condition as they're saying it is, most builders would have bought it, tore it down, and...
Correct.
Yeah, but I mean, that's...
Variance is in the past that we've, we have granted, and those really shouldn't be used to do this, but yeah, they do set precedents, but have been, they already had, they were already non-conforming, and they were adding an addition or something like that, and they didn't create any additional noncon, they didn't go any further than what they were already non-conforming.
I mean, yeah, Mr. Krug, to your point, a builder with unlimited amounts of cash could come in, knock this house down, and build two lots that are in conformity with this, but to me, that's... I understand the arguments being made, and you are correct by the strict letter of it. To me, the objections do not meet that, but that's why we vote, and I understand this is the discussion that we're having.
Well, let's go through each one, then, because, because part of what we have to do is we have to agree that all five criteria are met. So, if we look at the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property, I think that's corrupt.
Yes.
Yes.
The parcels plotted and the structure was built in 1928. That is exactly what we are dealing with. The variance can't be granted without demolishing the house, and the lots can't be split. So, the need for the variance is not the result of the action of the property owners or various property owners. I mean, it's definitely not due to his action because it was done that way in 1928. So, we cannot attribute it to the petitioner. Strict compliance will unnecessarily, will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property in its permitted use or render conformity with those regulations. So, I think we are, in some respects...
Well, give me a second, if you go back to the last one, it wasn't his fault, yes. It was planted that way. However, he's choosing to split the lots, so he is now creating this problem, yes.
Okay. Okay. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property in its permitted use. So, if we look back to a lot of different cases that we've had in front of us, I continually reference Vibe Credit Union when they came in front of us, and based upon the ordinance, they wanted to add extra green space in their parking lot, which was great. And people don't go to the bank like they used to go to the bank, and we don't need one parking spot for, or six parking spots for every teller. But that was what we had to evaluate this, their request on. And unfortunately, as beautiful as that parking lot was going to be, we had to deny the request because I went there the day before we faced the applicant, and I could go there the next day, and it was still going to be a bank and still going to be an ATM. And unfortunately, it just was the way that the ordinance was written. So, I think we have to look at the fact that that house can still be lived in today, tomorrow, or at some point, unfortunately, in the future, no matter what we say. And then, the requested variance is the minimum necessary to do substantial justice. Obviously, this is, you know, one of our questions. Can they do something else if we don't grant the variance, and how would that be done? Is that what everyone pretty much agrees to?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay. All right. And then the final criteria that must be met is the variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. The property is a corner lot, and developments to the south would have to comply with current zoning ordinances. I guess that's, you know, what it is and what it says, so I don't know if there's any other comments about that. Yes, Mr. Allen?
Yeah. I don't know how many that are currently seated here were around. We had a very similar request for a lot split on Robina, and it was denied by inches. We were down to, I don't know, three, four inches. And it was, that's...
I think we've had two that were very, very minimal amounts.
I think when the house was built originally, it was one, it was one property, and that's why it didn't matter as much that it was built a little over. Now, with the current...
Now, with the current regulations, it can be split, but unfortunately, the house is just a little bit over the, the mark that it needs to be.
Yeah, and the minimum square footage for a lot, that lot split, you can't move that lot line over two feet, like, that's, they're just barely, it just exactly missed the minimum square footage for the lot.
Right. Okay, so are we at a point where we feel comfortable that we can entertain a motion?
Mind if I say something before making that?
Well, we've, we've, can he speak? I don't think he can speak, right?
It's up to you.
Okay, you, you know what? We have not entertained a motion, and at that point, I think we can't. So if you would like to come up and, and share something that we might not understand...
Thank you so much. Thanks for letting me explain you one more time. Actually, I am going to be living in there. I'm not a flip guy who's going to come, flip the house, and leave. My son is going to be here and probably might raise a family here, okay? And there is a lot sitting next to it where nothing can be done, and this lot will stay there regardless for how long, while it, these days, it's okay. I mean, I have seen many cities where narrow houses is the way to go because land is getting less and less. And if we can create the landscape between two buildings, which makes sense, and we will create that by doing so, I already have this proposal in there, a two-foot variance on one side, nobody should be able to, will be able to see that it's happening on a practical basis. But if you're going, again, by this complicated thing which was created in nineteen twenty-eight, and today is twenty twenty-three, almost hundred years later, if I'm trying to make the city more beautiful and create a better structure in there instead of there is a tree which is standing there, and we just have, can leave it like that, that's it? That, that's my, that's my point, and I really request the city to, for this two-foot variance, we can have an access, two foot on the other side for underground activities that I've already, we can put it as a contingency of sale if I'm selling this lot to anybody else. Without this contingency, the lot will not be sold. That two will be overlapped.
We unfortunately are bound by the five criteria that we have read, and we have to either be able to say yes to all five criteria or no to all five criteria. If four of them are yes and one of them is no, we cannot, we cannot approve it or we cannot deny it, depending on that. That is, that is what we are, I don't even, sanction's probably not the word, that is what we are tasked with, and unfortunately, we are, we operate under very strict guidelines, and we don't always like to be the ones that say no, but we have to follow this, and if we give someone a, two inches and then someone comes and asks for six inches, it just continues on, and unfortunately, we can look at some of the most beautiful plans that anyone's ever presented, but if it doesn't meet what we need it to meet, we have to say no. It's a very black and white, unfortunately, it's very black and white criteria that is put down upon us by the state, and it's, we are, we are that part, that group that has to evaluate these requests based upon those criteria. We cannot get, I, it's wonderful that you want to bring your son, and he's gonna raise a family, and it's unfortunate that lot may have to sit the way it is, but we cannot take those factors into consideration when we evaluate a request.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, just make the argument in favor of the approval, because I'm reading the criteria, and here's what, here's what it would be, is the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. We acknowledge that the property was built at the time, not considering the possibility of a lot split, otherwise it would probably have been built two feet further in that direction and would have then allotted for this and not had this issue. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. That decision to build that original property in that location, which has since now rendered a need for a variance, was not the decision of the applicant before us today. Three, strict compliance with the ordinance, while I do acknowledge that his decision to make the lot split is before us today, but the other side of that is what I just stated. Three, strict compliance with the ordinance will not unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. We acknowledge this lot is going to sit vacant in perpetuity should we deny this motion today. To me, it's an unreasonable burden when there's an opportunity for this applicant to build and, and, you know, create value on that corner lot. Four, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners. It's a two-foot variance to the south, which I'm looking at the, the photo right now, there's about, you know, there is room. This, this, this fifteen feet on each side would still be complied with. It's the two-foot variance, and in my judgment, is the minimum variance necessary and would do substantial justice to the application. Five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. I have to say, of all the objections, there's not a single one from the neighbor that is on the other side of this vacant lot, and to me, the objections are immaterial to the issues before us today and have not substantially addressed anything. There is no Land Division Act violation. That's just first and foremost. And second of all, I've, I've yet to see anything from the surrounding property owners that suggests it would impact it. So that's the argument for the other side.
Do you have a motion to approve? I mean, basically...
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the, the variance.
Motion on the floor to approve the variance as requested, and that motion would be to approve the two feet, a variance of two feet on the south side yard setback so that the petition can proceed with a lot split. Do we have any support for that motion? Okay, so we don't have any support for that motion, and while I appreciate where you're coming from, and it, this is, this is a very tough, I'm caught up on the fact that if we don't approve the setback, someone can still live in this property as it is and not split the lot and not build another house, and that's where I get stuck. I understand what he wants to do, and I understand that it may never make sense, and it's a big piece of vacant property that's going to sit, but it is a house today, and it can be a house tomorrow whether or not we approve or deny this request, and it makes a lot of sense to me logically what you're saying, but when I look at it from the fact that saying no today still allows that house to exist tomorrow is where I get caught up, so... And it's unfortunate sometimes we're faced with these types of conversations and decisions. So seeing as the motion to approve did not have any support, is there a motion to deny the request for the variance? Okay, we don't have a motion, we don't have a motion to approve or not.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny, based on the five criteria, as we've discussed, the need for the variances, not due to unique circumstances, it kind of is, the need for the variance is the result of the action of the property owner. It is, unfortunately, and that's the sticking point. Strict compliance, we've talked about with the ordinance will not, will prevent the property owner from, it will not prevent him from using the current house. The requested, requested variance is not the minimum, it is the minimum, and it may or may not adversely impact the surrounding properties. There have not been any comments for, although, are the Willhoits directly behind? Nope. It may or may not adversely impact the surrounding properties, but I think the sticking point is that it's a result of the fact that he wants to split the property, so I move to deny the motion.
One second, one second.
So we have a support by Ms. Sarah, a support by Mr. Willner for the motion to deny the request that was been presented from us. And if we could take a rule call vote now, please?
Member Allen?
Yes.
Yes, to deny?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Uh, no.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McAnold?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpin?
Yes. I'm sorry, sir, unfortunately, we cannot approve your request as it's been presented to us today. And regarding some of the neighborhood comments, obviously, those are nothing, you know, we have no, we have nothing to do with those, but is there someone they should contact? Obviously, I think they've tried the Building Department, anyone, Mr.?
Code Enforcement. I wrote down the addresses, the three six nine oh Phillips, we'll have Code Enforcement follow-up on, and then if there's additional complaints about the Hillen Homes property, I know there's a couple sites that they're watching, if you could give me those addresses again, after, after...
Well, no, it's gonna be not a problem. Lawsuits, there's one against the city of Berkeley, and then there's also one in Oakland County, so...
Okay, so...
You'll be aware of them.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next up, other business, I know Councilman Henan is traveling, so we do not have a report from him, but also included in our packet were several other reports. The June and July Community Development Report were included, as well as an update on, what is our official name? I'm sorry.
Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee.
Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee report. So I don't know if you'd wanna, if we have any questions about those, if you'd just like to touch on those quickly?
Yeah, the Community Development Monthly Reports are just the usual reports that you receive each month on the Community Development Department's activities. The Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee Reports are a brief synopsis of all of the things the Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee has been working on. At this point, we've pretty much finalized recommendations for the zoning districts, and we're starting to get into some of the standards for those districts. We spent quite a while talking about residential districts and what those standards would look like. We haven't got as much into the non-residential districts, but that will be upcoming. Next month, we'll be talking about parking. That will probably take up the whole meeting, I'm imagining. But if you have any comments or questions on any of the materials that are summarized in there, please let me know. We're trying to get as many comments now so that we can get issues sorted out before we get too far along in the draft.
And I would tell you, as, as a person that's participated in the first four sessions we've had, it's been great in that we get a packet of materials a couple weeks ahead of the meeting to review, to ask questions, provide input on, to also maybe draw attention to things that might be concerning so that the, the, approximately two weeks before the meeting, they have a chance to address those things, so that when we do actually meet, our time is well-structured, organized, we're prepared, they're prepared. So it's, it's been a good process so far, and I think the, the way we spend our time in those meetings is, is going to yield us some good results, so don't hesitate to provide any comments or questions, and then we'll be doing this kind of report and keeping you updated as we go through the process. All right. As I said, Councilman Henan is not here, so we do not have a report from him, and he did not have anything to share with us either, so we are good. He just wanted to make sure we touched on the Steering Committee Report, which we've done. Next up would be any pub, public comments, and I don't know if you all would like to speak again, since we still have some people here. If not, it is seven forty-three, and I will officially adjourn the meeting of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and have a safe and fun dream cruise is what I'm gonna, how I'm gonna end with it. For all of you who dream cruise.
Bad time.
It is.